Council meeting Monday, September 27, 2001. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Kelly.
Here.
Bishop. Brancatelli. Conwell. Gardner. Gray. Griffin. Hairston. Bashir Jones. Joe Jones. Casey. McCormack. Mooney. Polensic. Santana. Sly. Spencer. You have a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you. Will everybody please rise for a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance?
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, please dispense with the journal.
By Councilmember Gardner, that the reading of the minutes of the last meeting be dispensed with the journal approved, seconded by Councilmember Bashir Jones.
Communications.
File number 830-2021 from Director Kerry D. Howard, Department of Public Safety. Notice of Grant Acceptance of $9,000... Excuse me, $9,999 from Ohio Department of Transportation for fiscal year '21 LEA grant number one. File number 831-2021 from Director Kerry D. Howard, Department of Public Safety. Notice of Grant Acceptance of $9,999 from Ohio Department of Transportation for fiscal year '21 LEA grant number two. File number 837-2021 from Anya Kolsker, Chief of Real Estate. Notice of intent to apply to Ohio Housing Finance Agency for low-income housing tax credit program for the development known as CARRAM Senior Living, 7918 Detroit Avenue, Ward 15. From the Ohio Division of Liquor Control, file number 832-2021, transfer of ownership application at 2058 East Fourth Street, Ward 3. File number 833-2021, new license application at 2887 Murray Hill Road, Ward 6. File number 834-2021, new license application at 530 Euclid Avenue, Ward 3. File number 835-2021, new license application at 5611 Woodland Avenue, Ward 5. File number 836-2021, transfer of ownership application at 2317 Dennison Avenue, Ward 12.
Condolence resolutions.
Resolutions of condolence by Councilmember Griffin for Wileene Lawrence, by Councilmember Hairston for Joyce E. Jefferson, by Councilmember Bashir Jones for Cassandra R. Johnson, by Councilmember Bashir Jones for Frank Sumter III, by Councilmember Spencer for Carolyn Malanij. Res... I'm sorry. That's it.
Are there any other condolences, Councilman Charles Slyfe?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Can we please hold out a number for Bishop Anthony Pillar?
So noted. And Councilman Polensic, would you like to be added as a sponsor? Self... Can we may you all be added as sponsors for that, please? Okay, thank you. If the council members will please rise for a moment of silence. Thank you. Congratulatory resolutions.
Resolutions of congratulations by Councilmember Griffin for Pamela Marshall Holmes, by Councilmember Spencer for Reverend C. Nozima Ikudu. Resolutions of recognition by Councilmember Griffin for Charles Oakley.
First reading, emergency ordinances to be referred for administrative and committee review.
Ordinance 838-2021 by Councilmembers McCormack and Kelly by departmental request. Authorizing Director of Public Health to accept a grant from the Ohio Environmental Protection Agency for financial assistance for the operation of Division of Air Quality. Authorizing Director to enter into one or more contracts for various services, equipment and supplies, and contracts with various agencies or entities necessary to operate the Division of Air Quality. Determining the method of making... I'm sorry. Determining the method of constructing, rehabilitating, renovating, replacing, or otherwise improving air monitoring sites and other similar structures on city-owned and city-leased property. And authorizing Director to enter into one or more contracts to construct the improvement and to design it. Ordinance 839-2021 by Councilmembers Hairston, Bishop, Brancatelli, and Kelly by departmental request. Authorizing Director of Public Works to enter into a lease with Landmark at the Lake LLC or its designee for department... for development of apartment units and parking on a portion of parcel 105-02-002A for a term of 93 years. Authorizing Director to enter into a property adoption agreement with LL55 Park LLC or its approved designee to improve and maintain a public park located on a portion of parcel 105-02-002A that is adjacent to the leased area for a term of 93 years. And authorizing the Director of Public Works to enter into a submerged land lease with the State of Ohio for these portions of that parcel for a term of 99 years. Ordinance 840-2021 by Councilmembers Griffin, Brancatelli, and Kelly by departmental request. Authorizing Director of Development to enter into a loan agreement with Fairfax Renaissance Development Corporation or its designee to provide economic development assistance to partially finance the development of a residential building located on the west side of East 105th Street and Frank Avenue in connection with the Innovation Square project and other associated costs necessary to redevelop the property. Ordinance 841-2021 by Councilmembers Conwell, Brancatelli, and Kelly by departmental request. Authorizing the Commissioner purchases and supplies to sell city-owned property no longer needed for public use located at 10700 Churchill Avenue to the NRP Group LLC or its designee for purposes of implementing the future Churchill Gateway Project. And authorizing retaining an easement and entering into an easement agreement for the public purpose of vehicular and pedestrian access. Ordinance 843-2021 by Councilmembers Griffin, Brancatelli, and Kelly by departmental request. Authorizing the appropriation of funds for the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 and authorizing various contracts to be executed no later than December 31, 2024, and funds to be expended by December 31, 2026. Ordinance 844-2021 by Councilmember Kelly by departmental request. Authorizing execution of a cooperative agreement with Cuyahoga County Gateway Economic Development Corporation of Greater Cleveland and/or Cleveland Indians Baseball Company LLC relating to the financing, operations, repair, upkeep, and construction of appropriate modernizations of progressive field and authorizing contribution of city funding.
First reading, ordinance referred for administrative and committee review.
Ordinance 842-2021 by Councilmember Conwell. Changing the use, area, and height districts of parcels of land northeast and southwest of Lakeview Road, south of Beulah Avenue to the East Cleveland City Line.
First reading, emergency resolutions to be adopted.
Resolution 845-2021 by Councilmember Casey. Objecting to the transfer of stock of a B1 and B5 liquor permit to 12141 Bennington Avenue. Resolution 846-2021 by Councilmembers Spencer, Gray, Polensic, McCormack, Santana, Hairston, and Conwell, supporting Women's March Cleveland and Women's March National for reproductive and civil rights on October 2, 2021. Resolution 847-2021 by Councilmembers Spencer, Gray, Polensic, McCormack, Santana, Hairston, and Conwell condemning the new state legislative maps as deeply flawed and unconstitutional gerrymanders of state legislative districts and calling upon Ohio lawmakers to immediately enact a transparent and deliberative public process for bipartisan congressional districts.
Read the motion to suspend the rules.
By Councilmember Gardner, that the rules be suspended and the legislation just read be placed on final passage, seconded by Councilmember Bashir Jones.
Please call the roll.
Kelly, Bishop, Brancatelli, Conwell, Gardner, Gray, Griffin, Hairston, Bashir Jones, Joe Jones, Casey, McCormack, Mooney, Polensic, Santana, Slyfe, Spencer. Fifteen yeas.
Thank you. Before calling the roll and adoption, I'd like to call in Councilwoman Jenny Spencer.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. I just wanted to briefly address you and my colleagues regarding Resolution 840... Two resolutions. First, Resolution 846-2021, which supports the Women's March Cleveland and the National Women's March, which will take place this Saturday, October 2. As we all know, women's rights to control their own bodies is at ever-increasing risk in this country, which is an economic justice issue. And I thank my colleagues who have joined me in co-sponsoring this legislation and... or this resolution. And just appreciate the expression of support for all women who will be demonstrating on our streets nationally this weekend. And then, second, Resolution 847-2021. Again, wanted to thank my colleagues who are joining me in co-sponsoring this resolution. I think, as we're all aware, twice, the citizens of Ohio voted to deem our... both our state legislative districts and our congressional districts unconstitutional and partisan. And unfortunately, the recent results from the State Redistricting Commission have left that situation very much the same. While there's much underway, there could be... There could be lawsuits forthcoming. This resolution really speaks to the fact that congressional district boundaries still have to be drawn in Ohio. And I felt it was important for this body to make its voice heard in this matter on behalf of the people of Ohio. So, thank you for joining me, to my colleagues who have done so.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Joe Jones.
Mr. President, I rise to be added on both pieces of the resolution that Councilwoman Spencer has introduced this evening.
Thank you. No further comments. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on adoption?
Kelly, Bishop, Brancatelli, Conwell, Gardner, Gray, Griffin, Hairston, Bashir Jones, Joe Jones, Casey, McCormack, Mooney, Polensic, Santana, Slyfe, Spencer. Fifteen yeas.
Thank you. Second reading, emergency ordinances to be passed.
Ordinance 682-2021 by Councilmembers Joe Jones and Kelly by departmental request to amend Section 2 of Ordinance 129-2021 relating to entering into one or more amendments to lease by way of concession agreements with various car rental companies that operate rental car concessions at Cleveland Hopkins International Airport to amend the guaranteed minimum privilege fee for certain companies. Ordinance 683-2021 by Councilmembers Bishop, Brancatelli, and Kelly by departmental request. Authorizing Director of Capital Projects to apply for and accept funding from the Ohio Department of Transportation for the preliminary alternative study of the lakefront pedestrian bridge. Authorizing the Director to apply for and accept gifts, grants, and other funding from other entities to enter into contract with Osborne Engineering Company for traffic modeling and engineering services. Authorizing other agreements and authorizing the Commissioner of Purchases and Supplies to acquire, accept, and record for right-of-way purposes real property and easements. Ordinance 686-2021 by Councilmembers Joe Jones and Kelly by departmental request. Authorizing Director of Port Control to exercise first option to renew a lease agreement with the Federal Express Corporation for building and land used as office, warehouse, and various parking facilities for vehicles and aircraft for the operation of a retail shipping and air freight service facility located at 5701 Postal Road and to amend the contract to change certain terms of the contract. Ordinance 687-2021 by Councilmembers Joe Jones and Kelly by departmental request. Authorizing Director of Port Control to exercise a first option to renew a lease agreement with Avair Pros Services for the purpose of operating and maintaining the inline baggage handling system at Cleveland Hopkins International Airport and to amend the contract to change certain terms of the contract. Ordinance 688-2021 by Councilmembers Joe Jones and Kelly by departmental request. Authorizing Director of Port Control to exercise first option to renew a lease agreement with RES Aviation for the purpose of operating a flight training school and providing aircraft management and pilot support services at Burke Lakefront Airport. Ordinance 689-2021 by Councilmembers Joe Jones and Kelly by departmental request. Authorizing Director of Port Control to exercise first option to renew a contract with Wadsworth and Associates, Inc. for labor and materials needed to maintain, repair, and expand the integrated access control security and CCTV systems for the various divisions of the Department of Port Control. Ordinance 783-2021 by Councilmembers Joe Jones and Kelly by departmental request. Authorizing the purchase by one or more contracts of one aircraft rescue and firefighting vehicle for the Division of Airports, Department of Port Control.
Read the motion to suspend the rules.
By Councilmember Gardner, that the rules be suspended and the legislation just read be placed on final passage, seconded by Councilmember Bashir Jones.
Please call the roll.
Kelly, Bishop, Brancatelli, Conwell, Gardner, Gray, Griffin, Hairston, Bashir Jones, Joe Jones, Casey, McCormack, Mooney, Polensic, Santana, Slyfe, Spencer. Fifteen yeas.
Please call the roll on passage.
Kelly, Bishop, Brancatelli, Conwell, Gardner, Gray, Griffin, Hairston, Bashir Jones, Joe Jones, Casey, McCormack, Mooney, Polensic, Santana, Slyfe, Spencer. Fifteen yeas.
Second reading, emergency resolutions to be adopted.
Resolution 784-2021 by Councilmember Kelly by departmental request. Requesting the county fiscal officer to make advances during the year 2022 pursuant to Section 32134 of the Ohio Revised Code. Resolution 785-2021 by Councilmember Kelly by departmental request. Accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Cuyahoga County Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county fiscal officer.
Read the motion to suspend the rules.
By Councilmember Gardner, that the rules be suspended and the legislation just read be placed on final passage, seconded by Councilmember Bashir Jones.
Please call the roll.
Kelly, Bishop, Brancatelli, Conwell, Gardner, Gray, Griffin, Hairston, Bashir Jones, Joe Jones, Casey, McCormack, Mooney, Polensic, Santana, Slyfe, Spencer. Fifteen yeas.
Please call the roll on adoption.
Kelly, Bishop, Brancatelli, Conwell, Gardner, Gray, Griffin, Hairston, Bashir Jones, Joe Jones, Casey, McCormack, Mooney, Polensic...
Joe Jones, Casey, McCormack, Mooney, Polencik, Santana, Slyfe, Spencer. Sixteen yays.
Thank you. This will conclude the legislative agenda for the evening. Are there any introductions for this evening? I'd like to welcome the men and women of Local 38 and Local 310, if you can please stand. Welcome. Thank you. And representatives of the Indians Soon-to-be Guardians and Greater Cleveland Partnership for being here, thank you. Welcome. Any other introductions? Anthony? Excuse me, Councilman Hairston?
I'm wondering about Steve and the side of the town.
Dan Ron, welcome. Okay. Are there any other announcements? Are there any announcements? Councilman Charles Slyfe?
Thank you, Mr. President. Pursuant to council rules, a minimum of five members are calling for a special meeting to review council priorities and this body's path forward as it relates to ARPA funding. That's the American Recovery Plan Act. We'll be delivering this information to the clerk, but it's scheduled to... so she can provide notice, but it's scheduled to take place next Monday, October 4th, at 10:00 a.m. Speaking personally, we all know that we're dealing with a significant amount of money, and there's a lot of questions from members about how to strategically use these dollars. Legislation was introduced tonight. It stems from a press conference that took place last week. The council was provided less than an hour notice, so I think it's important that we slow down and understand the opportunity we have and be strategic about it. I believe it's critical that the budgeting body of Cleveland government have the supplemental process in addition to the committee process so that we can advocate on behalf of our residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Blaine Griffin. Nope, I'm sorry, no. Councilman McCormick, and announcements?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think I'm working. There we go. Thank you, Mr. Chair. As Councilman Slyfe just noted too, we're hoping that every council member sign on to the Monday meeting, and really, kind of with two major objectives. With the administration's proposal out, we've now seen what the mayor's administration has with their priorities of the ARPA funding. We want to make sure that the council on its own, independently, can develop our own perspectives of what we're hearing from our residents and in our community. So, we've got the notice here. We want, you know, all council members to sign on to it, to create, which I think will be a really helpful supplemental meeting on Monday to brief council members on what the eligible uses are and more depth altogether, as well as to think about how do we collectively really develop our own priorities, see how they compare, contrast to the administration, and then figure out how to work together moving forward. So, I just want to thank Councilman Slyfe for that. And again, we've got the form. If anyone wants to sign on to be a part of the meeting on Monday, of course, it's open to the public, but to really work together as a council to see where our priorities are and how they compare and contrast with the administration. Again, as you noted, $200-plus million of spending, we've got to make sure we take our time to really get this right and to understand what those priorities of the body are as well. Thank you.
Councilman Polencik?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My other colleagues, Madam Clerk, I too support the meeting on Monday at 10:00, and I've been one of the signatures, one of the signatories on the letter. We have a lot of concerns. We have a lot of issues as pertains to how the monies will be spent and allocated. As I've said before, we will never have an opportunity like this again. Not in my tenure here in the body have we ever received this amount of revenue out of the federal government. So, we have to be penny wise, as I've said at the table. We have to make sure the funds that we are targeting go for the most important issues that all of us are confronted with in our neighborhoods. I've listened very loud and clear to what my own residents have had to say, and I've asked at neighborhood meetings, what's your thoughts, what's your suggestions? And I've heard it loud and clear. They want the money to be directed toward quality-of-life issues. They want the funds directed to our citizens to improve their daily lives and that of their children and how we can make things better in this city. So, I'm committed by working with my colleagues and the administration to make sure that those funds are targeted where they need to go and at all neighborhoods. All neighborhoods are the beneficiary of these funds. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And Councilmen, are there any other announcements? One announcement is you can begin... I'm sorry, Councilman Kevin Conwell?
President, and I just listened to Councilmember Mike Polencik narrate it. It should go to all neighborhoods, but when you look at the poorest neighborhoods, I mean, you've got to look at over in Cedar and Glenville and Huff, and the neighborhoods just have been forgotten. We've got to look at that. And when you... what was she at? She just narrated the sit-down at 10:00 a.m. Monday morning, and we look at plans for quality-of-life issues. But here's the thing, they... we had the apartments on money, and $90 million. You remember that, Michael? $90 million. And so, you look at Glenville and Huff, what happened to the money? What's the outcome measures from it? What's the outcome measures? Who got the money? $90 million. And you look at Glenville, and you see how it's falling... it has fallen apart. So, we could put together programs, but every quarter, every three months, every six months, we need to have report cards that you give back to the people on what's going on with their money, with their money. They could say what they want, and you could walk away and act like you're doing it, but if you don't have any outcome measures or way to evaluate it, pre-testing or post-testing, it will go for not. So, I'm there, and I'll sign up for that. And it should go through the committee meetings also, when you mentioned the $200 million. And the people should be able to speak at the committee meetings as well. So, we got to make it that people matters, that the people matter. The people matter from Huff and Glenville and Fairfax. They got to do that. That's very, very important. You know, if you're going to fight poverty. Thank you very much.
Thank Councilman Conwell. Is there any other... are there any other announcements? Is there any miscellaneous? Councilman Bashir Jones?
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. On September 15th, there was a young lady who passed away. Her name was Cassandra Johnson. Cassandra Johnson. And Cassandra, for years, she has been dealing with stress, 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 and ultimately, this stress ending up killing her. Now, Mr. President, Cassandra Johnson is the mother of Tanisha Anderson, of Tanisha Anderson. And it just says to me that there are a lot of people who are living in this city and are dealing with the trauma of being poor and unheard in this city. And as a result of it, some physically die. I remember one time I went to the doctor, and he said, you know, "Stress can kill you", you know? So, as we see this, you know, this media that says that Cleveland is the poorest city in the nation, I don't necessarily think that has to do necessarily with finances, but the lack of ability for those finances to reach those who need it the most. And that's the most important thing, because there's people like Tanisha Anderson's mother who passed away really from a broken heart, not only because her daughter was murdered, but at the same time because she never felt that she got the help that she needed. And that's what our city must be. We must be an institution that not makes it harder on those who are already living in a hard, 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 hard place, but our job is to do our best to make their lives easier. So, just want to say to everyone, that is our mission. That should be our mission, because everybody is not as blessed as we are, but there are those who are waiting for us to help them, to be their voices, to uplift them, to stand with them. And unfortunately, we lost Cassandra Johnson, but there are many others, as Councilman Conwell talked about, on the east side and the west side, who are dealing with serious trauma of not being heard. So, we have to make sure that we hear their voices. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Blaine Griffin?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to Councilman Jones for letting me know that. I'll be honest with you, I was there tonight that Tanisha actually passed away, and I did not know that Ms. Johnson passed away. It really hurts my heart, because it's unfortunate when you have to console these families when they're going through that. And you're right, toxic stress and trauma is really, really, really hurting people, and that's why I think that we do have to do more to do that. So, thank you so much. Commend you for that. Couple of other things, I'm really looking forward to the conversation on Monday. Glad that the five people put together a request to have this conversation, a rigorous conversation around these ARPA dollars. I just want to make sure that I help other people understand my process. I actually worked closely with the residents, and I dedicated a meeting to really get their input. I participated in two events that we had, even though I would have liked them to have better outcomes, but we really did hear a lot of other comments. I believe that John James got a lot of the comments from a lot of the council members, synthesized those, and I hope that whatever comes out of this meeting on Monday, that this council is willing to really lock arms and really stand behind the budget that we all get together to do. This council, speaking of stress and toxic stress, the strength is our bodies sticking together and being unified and working together and really trying to figure out how we can grab these issues together. So, I'm really looking forward to this conversation on Monday. I'm really looking forward to having a rigorous conversation, but I do want to remind everyone, I believe we had about 800 requests throughout this city. I get calls daily that everybody are requesting ARPA dollars. Everybody in town has this money spent. You have groups that want to set aside a portion of the money so that the citizens can have participation. At some point in time, I hope that we, as leaders, really listen to our communities and come up with a strategic plan in order to finalize these ARPA dollars. And I'll say this in closing, Mr. Chair, with all due respect to the administration, the last I checked, this is a proposal. This proposal is being presented to council. Once it's presented to council, we now have an opportunity to make sure, at the end of the day, as a legislative body, that we can do what we need to do that sets the priorities for this council. So, I'm looking forward to really working with everybody to come out with something unified. I'll be honest with you, I don't think everybody's going to get what they want, but at the end of the day, I do think that everybody should have an opportunity. I've heard a lot of the members press to me that they would like to have a more engaged conversation around this, but at the end of the day, we're going to have to make some decisions. And I hope that this council recognizes that some of those decisions may not be popular, some of those decisions may not go over well with the rest of the community, but at the end of the day, this council needs to stick together and stand behind whatever we come up with. So, I look forward to that meeting on Monday, and I hope everybody else does as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Joe Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise to also talk about this particular subject matter. I really appreciate the fact that the administration has pulled together a plan on how they see and what way they see how the money should be spent to assist the citizens of the city of Cleveland. I will be a part of signing on and joining that session. As I've stated early publicly, when we've had community sessions, that in the past, we've always had set aside time to deal with big budget matters. $500 million is a lot of money. The council should take its time to have the time to deliberate on what are all the possible uses of that money, how that money should be spent. And like in any marriage of the executive branch of government and the legislative branch of government, you look at the analysis of what is wrong with your city, plug those gaps, and begin the process to say, okay, then we can put dollars here, dollars over there, dollars over here to deal with our fundamental issues as a city. But the bottom line is, is that citizens should have, and each elected official who is sitting in this cabinet here should have an opportunity to have a transparent process. We should have a situation where we are down on Burke Lake Airport, we get away, we take two days or three days, as I suggested earlier, as we've done in the past over 20-some years ago, when we talk about big-ticketed items, talk about how and what the needs are of this city, how we plug those issues, then how we work together with the administration so we can marriage the plan, but the council needs to have its own plan. And if the council, as an executive body, a branch of government, as a legislative branch of government, doesn't have its own plan, then we're not doing the due diligence that our citizens sent us down here to do, and that's to represent their interest. So, when I stand here today and I look at the process of how it's been done, it hasn't been transparent. I don't have all the information. I don't know what the list of my other colleagues have in place. I can't compare and contrast anything. So, we need to have a person who can facilitate this meeting, sit down and talk to the council as a whole, talk about how we... how the money should be spent, and then look at the council as a whole from every respective territory, from Ward 1 to Ward 17, and see what needs to be done in those territories. I can tell you one thing, in the Lee Harbor neighborhood, we have a lot of needs, and just like my colleague Blaine Griffin, which I give him kudos for, he has established a session. I have also established a session in my neighborhood early June to talk about how those funds should be spent, and we had over 250-some people in attendance, and they stayed there in the COVID virus, talking about the issues. And my colleague Kevin Conwell was in attendance. And so, at the end of the day, the bottom line is, our citizens are concerned with how the money should be spent, and, Mr. President, I believe that we ought to do it the right way as a council, include the entire body. I don't think that, at the end of the day, if we do it in that process, we should wind up on the same page with the consensus of the body and working with the administration so we can move this city forward. This city right now has an opportunity to get on strong, firm, financial sound foundation, and we need to use those resources to be able to make that happen. Mr. President, and to my colleagues, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you very much, Councilmen. Are there any other miscellaneous? Thank you, and just... Councilman?
Poverty is not equal. When I hear everyone say that we need to go from Ward 1 through 17, poverty is just not equal. When you look at my neighborhood, Glenville, and the Huff and Fairfax neighborhoods, these neighborhoods, if we divided up, Mr. President, like when I first got here, I came here before you, and I don't like how the CDBG dollars are even divided up, as I mentioned to you, Chairman Brancatelli, how can you evaluate the Kansman area, Glenville area, Huff area, round Cedar, round in Ward 5, where this abject poverty is at? And then you take the funding and you divide it up equally. That's crazy, man. You got to take it where the poverty is actually at, where the violence is happening, where people are not working. How can you say you're going to take $511 million and divide it up equally? Cleveland will always be in the bottom of the poverty. And it's always birthed in my heart and my soul. I know it'd be hard to get that money back now, because we're so used to having it. So, if you sitting here and you talking about poverty, then look at these other wards, just suffering, and infant mortality is out of control. It burns me up, man. It really burns me up. Thank you. Thank you for the privilege.
Thanks, Councilman. We'll have that discussion as... off the Monday meeting calendar. Councilman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I understand what you're saying, Councilman Conwell, but I... and I hear about this, but I think, you know, what's lost in this is, well, maybe these monies can't be spread equally everywhere across the city. There's a lot of areas of the city that have received a lot of development attention and are doing pretty well financially compared to the others, you know, some areas of Tremont, some areas of Detroit Shoreway, some areas of Ohio City. But, like in my ward, Ward 11, it's just like you said, that's been a forgotten ward. And we're a ward that people think, oh, the west side's paved with gold, it's beautiful. My ward's on the west side, it's over half minority. It's 30% African-American, 20% Latino, and the poverty rate in much of my ward is the same as it is on the east side. And I have abject poverty, just like you do in here, but not ward-wide, but in my ward, it's over 33%. So, I'm just saying, it's got... you got to take a look at the whole area, and there's parts of my ward that need that too, with minorities and with abject poverty. It's not just strictly east-side/west-side thing, and I agree that a lot of this shouldn't just be spread, as Councilman Griffin said, like peanut butter everywhere, but it can't just be this thing, well, it's just the east side. There are pockets of poverty on the west side. There are areas of my ward where there's 24-hour-day prostitution, the drug dealing, the murders. It's no different in parts of my ward, and it's just as dangerous in... not my whole ward. A lot of my ward is very nice, but I'm just pointing out that it can't be forgotten, because I think there's this old-school thought that the west side's white and the east side's... Well, my ward is probably one of the, actually, the most diverse, where it's half minority. You know, it's not West Park, where it's still mostly white or the east side, but that... those areas can't be forgotten, and that's what I just want to bring up. I understand what you're saying, and I agree, but what can't be forgotten... I understand what you're saying, and I agree, but what can't be forgotten is that it's not just Glenville, it's not just the east side. You take, like, Jasmine's Ward and my ward, even part of Casey's Ward, overall, they may be doing better, but there are pockets that are just as bad or worse than anywhere on the east side, so those can't be forgotten, and that's what I just want to voice to. Respectfully, too, I look forward to our discussions on this, and maybe we can get some more information on this, this ordinance that was introduced by the mayor. There doesn't seem to be a lot to it, so I guess we'll have that at a committee meeting too. Well, anyways, thank you all.
All right. Thanks, Councilman. Before adjourn, just for those that are, that are here, you know, please, I want to thank John James for soliciting all of the suggestions from the body, compiling those, passing on to the administration, passing on here. I want to thank everybody that was at the two previous meetings where we discussed this, but sure, we can have a third, and just to make things easier, you can just ask me next time. So, with that, Madam Clerk, please excuse the absences.
By Councilmember Gardner that the absence of Councilmember Casey is hereby excused, seconded by Councilmember Bashir Jones.
Thank you. This council adjourned. Our next regular meeting is scheduled for October 4th, 2021.